President.
Okay. Well, again, sorry I'm late, everyone. And I would like to call the May 19th, 2021 Board Meeting to Order and remind everyone to please mute your audio when you're not speaking. And please do state your name when you're prior to making a comment or a motion or a second action on an action item. So, thank you. I will ask that each Commissioner please respond with a "here" when I call his name. Commissioner Doan?
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan.
Here.
Commissioner Sanders?
Here.
And Commissioner Schmidt?
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bagnall, last me, I'm the last one here, so that's kind of appropriate. And before we get going on the meeting, I would just like to note for the record that tonight is Commissioner Doan's 75th birthday, and he's here with us. Congratulations on that and glad to have you with us. Many happy returns of the day.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Next, we will move to reports by the Chief Executive Officer and Management Staff. So, CEO Tom Hickman, you can lead off.
All right, well, thank you very much, President Bagnall and Commissioners. We've got quite a bit tonight, it's been an active 24 hours here, but we'll start with the Portland Cryptosporidium results. For the month of April 2021, the Portland Water Bureau reported a total of two cryptosporidium osis detections in water samples collected from the Bull Run Headworks. The Oregon Health Authority has determined that the public does not need to take additional protections at this time. Complete results of Portland's cryptosporidium monitoring are posted on the city's website, and I'm not going to read the link. But if anyone is interested, go to the city's website and follow their link through water quality. Let's see, this has been evolving since I wrote this yesterday, a lot has changed, but we'll update you here. The district is closely monitoring workforce-related COVID-19 implications. Last week, the Center for Disease Control announced modified guidance. Staff is working with Oregon OSHA to see when, if, we can lift face covering requirements at TBWD. In the last 24 hours here, we have heard from OHA and Oregon OSHA, and both are following essentially the CDC guidance that says no more mask or social distancing if you are fully vaccinated. But the burden is on us to be fully, to verify that people are fully vaccinated here. So, I've asked Mike Jacobs, our Safety Manager, to take a look at what's involved in that and to make sure that we can verify. For our field workers, if they're outdoors, they don't have to wear a mask anymore. But if they were to come, if they come indoors into the office and they're not vaccinated, then they're required to mask as well as anyone who would come in. So, this has been long awaited for, and I'll follow on here, and then I'm going to open this up for any questions. I do have Mike Jacobs on the call here, along with Amy Blue, in case you have any questions about any of the details of any of this. In addition, TBWD has been working towards an alternate work arrangement policy for eligible staff. This policy encompasses alternate work schedules, telework, and telecommuting opportunities, and would be effective after temporary emergency work-from-home provisions are discontinued. So, each, an eligible employee would have to essentially go through the policy process to apply, and then each individual manager would review to determine if what they're requesting is acceptable and will work. The last item here on COVID-19 is really for the board. So, the board may want to start thinking about when, if, it wants to start holding in-person meetings again. Currently, we can hold in-person meetings if everyone is masked and socially distant. Well, Nats changed, now we would have to have verification. If you don't want to wear a mask, we have to have verification that you actually received the vaccine. However, this has been lifted now, since I wrote this. But the board may want to consider when they want to start holding in-person meetings again. The other issue for the board to consider is if they want to continue the option for virtual attendance even after the constraints of the pandemic are lifted. Some agencies have expressed a desire to continue virtual attendance because of its convenience. We have budgeted for an upgrade in the AV system for the boardroom, which would allow for some to participate virtually in the near future. So, the question really here for the board is, is there a desire? Two things, one, is there a desire to start here in the relative near future, next couple months, to start holding in-person meetings again? And if there is that desire, what is the timing of that? When do we start heading that direction? The other question for the board is, do you want to maintain the convenience of virtual attendance so that Commissioners, public could attend virtually if they wish in the future? So, I'm posing, that's a lot of information, I know, but I'm opening the door now to the questions, to those questions I just asked, or any questions you may have about what the district is doing here in response to the easing of restrictions.
So, just speaking for myself, I would support, I would love to go back to in-person meetings, but I would also very strongly support an option for people who are not comfortable for that, or for people who find it easier to communicate with the board on the virtual meetings. But I think there's another question that you haven't posed, that I think the board should consider, which is that if we do go back to in-person live meetings, do we also go back to televising them? That was a big question, and it's a lot of money, and nobody watches. So, do we go back to televised meetings, or do we not? And I would be interested in hearing from my fellow board members what they think about that, in addition to the other questions before us.
Well, I have a neighbor that occasionally is up at 3:00 in the morning, and we come on, so I'm going, you know, 3?
This is Jim Doan. Let me try a hybrid approach here, which is that we could do virtual meetings for the public. If they want to attend our stuff, they could do it virtually, we could meet in person. I'm really ambivalent, I really like the virtual meetings. On the other hand, I really want to be there when the Commissioners are sworn in for their new term. I think that's a matter of respect. So, maybe we could ditch the TV, and if people want to join us, which I think is much more appropriate, they could do virtually. Possible? I don't know.
That's a really interesting point, Commissioner Doan, and actually, I am especially glad to hear you weigh in on this, because you are the one that, you are probably the person I was most worried about, about going back to in-person meetings, because I think the virtual has worked pretty well for you, and I don't want to see us go backwards on that.
So, one of the things, if I could just throw this out there, if the board would like, we could make this a work session topic, and we could prepare a little bit of information of, you know, what we see as the pros and cons, and the various options of a hybrid, as Commissioner Doan just suggested. So, I don't, I thought if it was a quick, easy discussion tonight, we could do it, but if this is something worthy of a longer discussion, we can do this during a work session.
Yeah, Tom, this is Todd Sanders, and Jim Doan brought up a really good point. What if we moved this to a YouTube platform where we were broadcasting live to YouTube, but our constituents could participate that way, and it would still be recorded? But again, this is something that probably is best discussed as a work session topic.
Well, I can answer, Todd, Commissioner Sanders, I'm sorry, that, you know, we could certainly look into those possibilities of what are our options for broadcasting, because President Bagnall was correct, that was one of the things I hadn't thought about, is do we continue to televise? If we don't do televised, then what are other options? And certainly YouTube and other broadcast channels that are available over the Internet, we could evaluate, look at, and bring back to the board about their feasibility, any implications. I don't know if there's any costs associated with any of that. I don't think so, but I don't know. So, we can certainly do that. So, it sounds like the board would like me to set this up for a work session discussion.
Yeah, this is Dick, the thing about meeting in person at the district headquarters, it's travel time. I mean, Commissioner Duggan, on occasion, would be late because he couldn't get from here to there at that time of day, and that's the only downside I can see to it.
Yeah, there are some, I would agree, you know, I don't personally have any issues with getting to the district, but there are some meetings, and they're actually not district board meetings, but some of the meetings that I attend, like the Joint Water Commission meetings, that's one of my committee assignments, Joint Water Commission meetings, virtually as opposed to in-person, are, they are difficult, and they are not as productive. So, generally speaking, I would, I am in favor of moving us toward in-person meetings where it works, but not necessarily our board meetings. I mean, if there are better, more convenient, more open ways for us to do board meetings, I'm all in favor of that, but I hope the board will be open to considering other ways of meeting for other meetings. And yeah, I agree with what I've heard so far, that I think this is a really good work session topic, because there's several things to be concerned here.
This is Commissioner Duggan, I would also like to hear more about the options for upgrading the AV system to allow for maximum flexibility, not only for people wanting to participate by attending a board meeting, but also perhaps testifying when we get to rate hearings or any other topic where people want to drop in and watch the board.
Excellent point.
So, these, I've made notes here, so we'll set up a future work session to allow further discussion on this and give you all some time to think about all of this and what it means, and we'll move forward from there. So, looking forward to that discussion. And if you have any additional ideas beyond some of the things you've mentioned here, as you think about this, that you want us to look into, please just message me, and we'll add them to the list of things that we look into. Okay. Moving on, weather forecast. The National Weather Service recently provided an updated forecast for the region. We are working with all of our regional partners closely and monitoring the situation. Here are the key takeaways that we got from the National Weather Service. The Willamette Valley had its driest April on record. The past 60 days in Oregon, between 25% to 75% below normal rainfall. Three-month outlook is dry and warmer than normal, and we're expecting the lowest stream flows on record. Currently, the Clackamas is doing pretty good because of snowpack, but expect that to be down around the 2015 levels by midsummer. And the Willamette River at Salem is 50% of normal. So, you know, we've certainly been wanting a warmer summer to help with water sales. It looks like we're going to get that, but unfortunately, it's going to overlap with what looks like a pretty serious constraint on our resources. We'll see how it plays out, we'll certainly keep you all informed as we learn more and watch this. And I see Commissioner Duggan has a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to have it clarified, is the Willamette River at Salem 50% of normal now, or is that what's projected later this summer?
It's what it's at now.
Yeah. Whoa, thank you.
Yeah, this was, the weather forecast webinar information that was, that Tom just shared, was a complete surprise to everyone, and the webinar was kind of pulled together pretty quickly, just so that everyone had some information available to them for their planning purpose.
Thank you.
So, and if you haven't seen the news, the situation's even worse in the Clackamas Basin, so it's definitely a tough situation. Legislative update, and this has evolved as well. TBWD continues to pursue potential funding opportunities at both the federal and state level. Last week, the district's AMI funding request was submitted to the Senate. We are closely watching any federal infrastructure bills that may provide funding. In terms of utility assistance, we know that the December 2020 and American Rescue Act program funds will be kept separately. Both funding streams will pass through the Oregon Housing and Community Services Department, and those will pass through the community action agencies. The funding amounts are expected in the coming weeks, so we're hoping here in the next week or so that we hear that there's, this funding is finally available to our customers that qualify. Also, a quick update that I didn't get to put in here, tomorrow morning, I've been asked to speak to the House Water Committee and discuss the idea of investment in seismic resiliency. So, we'll be doing that tomorrow, and I've been working with our staff, Chief Engineer Pack, and our Water Quality Manager, Joel Carey, they've helped prep me for tomorrow's committee meeting, and we look forward to it. I'm also speaking with somebody from the city of Albany, somebody from the city of Hermiston, along with League of Oregon Cities and the Associated Clean Water Agencies. So, we're all presenting tomorrow. Let's see. And then, the next talk in water will be on June 2nd at noon. The presentation will be on Backflow Prevention, provided by Khalil Howell, our Senior Water Quality Inspector. Registration information will be posted on the district's website under our Virtual Forums tab. And the main talk in water, which happened today, was our main speaker was Steve Carper, he's our water conservation technician. Over 100 customers registered for this event, I think 50-some attended, and the content is available via tbwd.org or on our YouTube channel. If you have an irrigation system, there are some great tips on how to conduct your outdoor watering for efficiency while maintaining healthy landscaping and grass. So, I don't, I don't know who all got to attend today, but I thought it was very good and very helpful, and if you're interested in smart, the smart meters, smart irrigation meters, there's great information there about those. The 2020 Water Quality Report is now available at tbwd.org. Water Quality Report, this required publication summarizes findings from the 2020 water sampling. Talton Valley Water District's water quality passed the regulatory compliance standards. And if there's no other questions from the board, I'm going to turn this over to Paul Matthews, our Chief Financial Officer, and he will be presenting the Safety Minute and the Department Report this evening.
Thank you, Tom. So, I want to take just a moment to talk about drunk driving tips, and I, you know, we don't want to talk about this too often, because there's a lot of negative connotations, but I was in the eighth grade, and remember very vividly, my sister's favorite teacher in high school died over Memorial Day weekend from a drunk driving accident. And as we approached the Memorial Day weekend, I thought this would be a topic that we could discuss here tonight. It's something that can affect all of us. So, a couple of things to keep in mind is when alcohol can be unsafe, and I think we can all reflect on that for ourselves, as well as for our loved ones. Signs and symptoms, being unable to limit the amount of alcohol you drink, and we've all seen people who, once they start going, they don't have a way of slowing down or stopping. That can be a sign or symptom that you have an unsafe relationship with alcohol, and that can lead to drinking and driving. Feeling a strong craving or an urge to drink alcohol, spending a lot of time drinking, getting alcohol, or recovering from hangovers, feeling to fulfill your obligations at work, school, or home due to repeated alcohol use, giving up or reducing social work activities and hobbies, if you're doing that because of alcohol, that can be a sign. Developing intolerance, so that you need more alcohol to feel its effect, so if beer isn't enough and you move to harder alcohol, that too can be a sign. Having withdrawal symptoms such as nausea, sweating, shaking, when you don't drink, or drinking just to avoid those kinds of symptoms. I said that I had 12 tips, and I've got them listed here, and you might notice that there are 10 on the list, and that's because the first one, I think, deserves triple billing, and that is, if you've been drinking, do not drive, just simply do not drive. And never ride in a car with a driver that you suspect is under the influence or has been drinking. Does need a sober driver to be the designated driver before you start your activities. Don't let somebody who's drinking decide whether or not you need a designated driver, even if that is you. Take care of those things while you're sober, make sure you have arrangements. If all of this fails, consider the use of public transportation, taxis, Uber, Lyft, all those are available to us now, and that can save us a lot of problems. Have a safe person to call, that's important, especially for teens who may find themselves in a compromising situation where they feel they need to drive, if there's a safe person they can call, that can always help out in that situation. For us, let's find ways to include non-alcoholic drink options in the festive activities that we have, parties and so forth. We should have non-alcoholic options for those who choose not to drink, or for those who are the designated driver. And if you are arrested for drunk driving, do seek medical-based alcohol screening for you or a loved one, if you've been arrested or have a DUI. It's important to get that intervention early and make sure it's medically-based screening. Consider behavioral therapies, such as counselor support groups, if that's been a problem for you in the past, or if it is for a loved one. Attend mutual support groups, those times often help. And the last one I have here is to talk to your children well before their teen years, so they can have a realistic understanding of the adult responsibilities that alcohol brings with it. So, that concludes my safety moment. Are there any questions or thoughts people have on that? If not, I'll transition to our Department Report. And it's always an interesting challenge when we put together our department reports, what is that we want to talk about, and we typically think of the Finance Department as people that are pretty good at math and do a lot of arithmetic, ledgers of numbers, add columns together, sometimes rows, abstract, multiply, divide, and sometimes amortize, but we also write a lot. And I wanted to go through some of the documents that we put together and give you a sense of why it is that we do it. So, within the, but before I get there, I do want to talk about the documents we do produce in the Finance Department, and I want to clean up a little bit on our WIFIA status and baseline 6.1 issue. So, that's related to the Willamette Water Supply System, and just to close with a bit of conversation about that before we get into the business-gen items. So, here's a list of some of the documents that we produce here within the Finance Department, and these are the documents that I feel are actually very important, that we have available on our shelves, and several reasons for that. First is we want to create a narrative that we can share with rating agencies, bankers, and with our partners, that TBWD is serious about financial management, that our board has an emphasis on it, and that we have a track record of doing these things. I hazard a guess that if you talk to most of our partners, they aren't going to have many of the items that are on this list readily available, and especially at the department level for their Water Department. So, that's why we do these things, and that's why we find it to be very important. The first one I want to talk about is something that the board adopted in May of 2019, which are our financial management policies, which we update. In fact, part of that policy has an automatic update, every time that we adopt a financial plan, there's an exhibit to the financial management policies that gets updated, as well as our business case evaluation guidelines. But within those financial management policies, it provides everything from internal controls and how we'll do that, debt policies, everything with the exception of the investment policy, which the board adopts annually outside of the financial management policies. So, it really is that framework that we use for managing the district's finances, it was approved by the, or adopted by the board, and it is an official document that frankly we share broadly with people who want to know more about how TBWD does its financial business. The second item is the financial plan, which of course is the subject of tonight's meeting. We're going to have an agenda item about the financial plan, so I won't go into too much detail here, but again, the financial plan is an important document, it's that long-term planning horizon. We're working on the biannual budget, you're all involved with that, comprehensive annual financial report, that's the official document, we present our financial statements, our indirect cost allocation plan, which is something that you may not know too much about, but the district maintains an indirect cost allocation plan, which helps us justify our overhead rates, both for our partners as well as capitalizing projects. We have that in our written documents, we can share it with our partners and readily make it available. The business case evaluation guidelines, these are detailed guidelines that are authoritative for the district, provides ways that we can conduct our business case evaluations, includes a lot of details, we'll talk a little bit about those as well. And then we conduct, we prepare a lot of agency agreements, and these are requirements typically of an IGA, where we have to tell our partners how much we're charging them so they can develop their own budgets. how much we're charging them so they can develop their own budgets. So I want to come back a little bit to the broader picture of this. This is all part of our financial management, and each one of these components supports that accountability and the oversight that we have within our financial management. So the goal here for us in finance is to have a documented track record that we can produce for rating agencies, for bankers, and everybody else, that says we have our stuff together, and that we take financial management very seriously here at Twelton Valley Water District. Okay, so the first one I talked a bit about was the financial management policies. It's that comprehensive document that lists all of our financial management policies with the exception of the investment policy. And it demonstrates the commitment of the board as well as management to strong financial management. It documents the policies to be followed by the district, and because it was adopted by the board, it is authoritative in that regard. It provides the basis for the practices that affect our partners, so we can literally say to our partners, we do this because it's part of our policies, it's an adopted policy, and we've been doing it as part of our normal business practice. Want to always be able to come back to that statement. It isn't something we've done in an ad hoc way, it's consistent with how TVWD does its business. And it embraces the Government Finance Officer Association best practice, which is to have your financial management policies committed and adopted. So we appreciate the board's support of our financial management policies. The next is the financial plan. And if you've thumbed through your packet, you'll see that's a relatively sizable document. It's attached to the resolution. We're going to ask you tonight to adopt the resolution that approves the financial plan. It ensures that we maintain a strategic focus here at the district as it relates to the finances, and it does provide accountability over time because the forecast itself becomes a historical record, and we can show what we were planning to do and what deviated from those plans. It provides our stakeholders need information. In fact, tomorrow, we're having what's called a surveillance call with Fitch, which is one of the national rating agencies that has issued TVWD its credit rating. We provide them our financial plan, and it contains the information they need to assess our creditworthiness. It demonstrates our commitment to sound financial management by having a 30-year financial plan, but it really does communicate the details to these external parties, whether they're bankers, whether the EPA, the WIFIA program, all these folks. And again, it's part of that narrative that TVWD takes financial management seriously, and it lays that out in a lot of detail. The biannual budget, we're obviously in the middle of our biannual budget. It's that two-year spending plan. It establishes our appropriations or legal limits that we have for the district, and it does ensure accountability because it is part of the audit process. Our auditors audit against the budget to ensure that we have complied with it. And it follows Oregon Budget Law as well as GFOA best practices. So you'll hear more about that next week as we have our budget committee meeting. Our comprehensive annual financial report is a critical document, presents the district's audited financial statements. It is the document that we provide really to anybody who asks for the official record of our financial statements. It is the definitive document. It also has a statistics section in there that provides longitudinal information over time that allows us to track the district's performance. It is the quintessential accountability device because it is audited by an independent auditor each year. And of course, we use that to make our financial statements even better presented within the comprehensive financial report. It follows Oregon Audit Law as well as GFOA best practices, and it's a source of historical information for all the external parties. And that's why people are always asking for our CAFR. They're available online, going back for several years. I did talk a little bit about our indirect cost allocation plan. That's very important as TVWD is in that transition phase to becoming a regional provider of services. And we're obviously needing to justify our overhead costs to our partners and how we recover those overhead costs. And so the indirect cost allocation plan does it. It substantiates our overhead charges. We use that for capitalizing projects, including those within the joint ventures. It follows the federal guidelines for cost allocations for indirect cost, and that's important, especially as we consider some of the alternative funding that we may be looking at. We'll have greater compliance requirements for single audits as it's described with the federal government. And it follows the district's financial management policies, which is that we will have an indirect cost allocation plan. We put it into a written document, we make that available to our partners if they ask, and essentially, after asking several times and being given these documents, their interest becomes a little bit less cued. One of the documents that actually I'm most proud, wrong word, but happy about is our business case evaluation guidelines. And this is, I think, an essential document for really any utility, whether you're a private investor-owned utility or a public agency like we are. It provides the framework that we do to conduct business case evaluations. And what is a business case? It is essentially comparing options. What should we be doing, running the numbers, so to speak, to come up with what is the best alternative and to ensure that we're using the customer's money wisely. It establishes our discount rates, assumed inflation rates, and other factors that we need to use within business case evaluation. It provides that for the district-wide, so everybody's on the same sheet of music, and we're all using the same information to conduct our business case evaluations. Also, it provides information that's required for the district's least cost analysis. So as part of our, as part of Oregon law, you might remember the district board actually adopted a least cost policy, and we conduct analysis that ensures that when we make a decision, whether we're going to perform a public works project with our own employees or we're going to contract it out, that we choose the least cost option, and that we appropriately calculate and account for our cost and make a wise decision as opposed to just a simple calculation that might suggest our costs are higher than what contracting out services would be. So it's important to have that policy in place. The other thing within our business case evaluation guidelines is it describes industry best practices approaches for conducting those, and it follows our financial management policies. The agency agreements, we have several of these, and I just listed some of these to give you a sense of what they are. But this is essentially providing our partners with the costs that we have of providing the services we give them, and giving them the details so they can prepare their own budgets. So we have several of them for Beaverton. We have the Beaverton meter reading agreement. So we actually read Beaverton's meters on their behalf, and we recover our cost of doing that, and that agency agreement provides those costs to the city of Beaverton. The Beaverton wheeling rates, which is where we wheel water for the city of Beaverton customers, as well as our joint billing. We bill sewer and surface water management customers in the city of Beaverton. We build those customers that are also our water customers. That's a very efficient way of billing customers and provides benefits to our customers. And so it's obviously a great opportunity. We do the same thing with Clean Water Services, where we jointly bill. In fact, we do the billing for some of their Clean Water Service-only customers. These are customers that live outside of the TVWD service area but still receive retail-level service from Clean Water Services. King City might be an example that you would think of, or customers who live in the Raleigh Water District or West Slope. You can imagine those customers get services from Clean Water Services that are not located within the city, and we build those on there we have. We have a small group with Hillsborough to wheel water in the South Hillsborough area. That also is an agency agreement, and as well as the West Slope Water District Fire Line charges. Now, taken all together, you might think, well, it's just several letters, but there's a lot of analysis that goes behind conducting these, preparing these letters so that the numbers are all adequately documented. So what do we want to do in the future? And there's a few things that we would like to add to our workload, but again, it's based on our resources, but we think it does have value. The first on the list here is an SDC report, so we can document more fully the methodology we use, as well as the description of the capital improvements that are on the capital improvement list, which is part of the adopted budget process that we go through, and just provide one source of information about SDCs. And this is becoming more important as the Oregon Legislature is looking at reforming SDCs. We'd like to have a single source of information on that that if requested, we could provide to interested parties. And then our cost of services analysis. We do a detailed cost of services analysis to support our willing agreement with Beaverton, but we'd like to have that formalized and recorded in our, for our records as well. So with that, I'm going to switch topics unless there are any questions about the documents that we prepare and why we need to be able to write as well as calculate. Any questions about that?
I guess I would just like to chime in in support of doing an SDC report because there is an actual requirement by the state that we stand ready to report on what our SDC methodology is and who we've charged and why we charge them. And in the past, I've had the disconcerting experience of providing that report to the state and having them say, why are you sending us this? It's kind of a weird thing, but I think it's really good that TVWD is organized and has that information at our disposal.
Yes, President Bagnall, and you know, and the way we've always approached it, and I'm sure that this is, we got this from you, is it's a requirement, it's a public document, so we need to have it available. And so we have the information, but what I'd like to do is formalize it into a more structured report where we combine the information in one place and publish it routinely.
I like it.
Well, thank you. So I'm going to change topics here and talk a little bit about the Willamette Water Supply, I think I skipped a slide, the Willamette Water Supply baseline 6.1. And I may need to get some support from our program director, Dave Krask, if I get off base here. So Director Krask, get ready to give me a swift virtual kick in the fourth point of contact if I'm off bases here at all. But want to talk a little bit about, as we went through developing our financial strategy, the board will remember back in March, we actually, the board approved our financial strategy, which is the basis for the financial plan that we're going to present tonight. That included delaying portions of PLW 2.0 or Pipeline West 2.0. And we're delaying portions of Pipeline West 2.0 that was basically north of Francis Street with a couple of exceptions, having to do with your Enka Woods Nature Park and something called the Burn Property. If you need to know more information about that, Director Krask will have to help me out. The other thing we did was delay 50 million gallons of terminal storage at the reservoir site. So the plan was to build 30 million gallons of storage in two reservoirs, and we're going to delay the second reservoir until the demands justify its construction. And we integrated those into our financial plan. And one of the questions that we had was, would this be supported by the WIFIA program? So before I get to that, I'm just, want to give Dave Krask an opportunity to correct anything I said, or for the board to ask any questions clarifying about the baseline 6.1 project, baseline 6.1 revisions.
Dave Krask, no corrections for me. Paul, you're doing great.
Thank you. And no question. So I'll move on to what the WIFIA program said. So as we were evaluating this, one of the things that we were very concerned with was, would this be approved by the EPA? Because our WIFIA loan was to complete the Willamette Water Supply System. So we set about communicating with the EPA in a very deliberate way and had a conversation with them, explained to them what we were planning to do. They sent us an email, and I just want to take an excerpt out of that email and let you know the good news, that essentially, the EPA said the changes are consistent with the loan agreement between EPA and TVWD and the city of Hillsborough, and constitute a logical evolution of a complicated project typical of what we see in big infrastructure undertakings. The proposed baseline budget does not change the definition of the project as presented in the loan agreement. And the reason that was very critical for us, and we wanted to get that in writing, is because we didn't want to be in what's called development default, where we didn't complete the project within two years of the projected substantial completion date. A lot of technical terms in here, but essentially, we said to the EPA when we took out the loan, we're expecting to get this done by June 30, July 1 of 2026. And if we were to delay that more than two years, we'd have to get permission from the EPA. Otherwise, the way the loan kicks off and a lot of the other provisions of the loan become problematic for them. And if you're not going to complete it within two years, you could be considered in development default. We didn't want that to occur. So we asked the EPA, we laid out the rationale for what we were doing, we briefed them on this, had a couple of conference calls with them, and they responded back to us with the, "All okay, you're good to go." And we were very happy to get such a clear support from the EPA that this was well within the WIFIA loan agreement and would not result in any sort of development default. So we're very happy about that. With that, any questions that you might have about any things that covered my department report or the WIFIA baseline 6.1 or the EPA?
This is Jim Doan. How often do we revise the baseline? Like, what's the date on baseline 6.1? Is there going to be a 7.1 or a 6.2? And when do they come about?
I think I will kick that to Director Krask. I think you're the more logical person to answer that question, Dave. I can, but I think you're better at it.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, Commissioner Doan. We, as a matter of course, we update the baseline each year as far as a part of our planning and checking on the overall program. So that's a requirement in terms of managing the program. Each year, we update it. Baseline 6.1 was approved by the WWSS Board on April, at its April Board Meeting. And that's what we're going with for the next fiscal year. And baseline 7.0, the draft of that will be prepared and delivered to the management committee and to the finance committees in the WWSS in December of this year. And so we're already starting to think about what that's going to look like and what's going to inform that and getting to work on it.
Oh, thank you.
So thank you, Paul and Dave and Tom. Is there anything else on the CEO report or department report?
None from me. Thank you.
Okay, then we will move swiftly and efficiently on to the reports of meetings attended. And I will go ahead and go with alphabetical order. Commissioner Doan, would you lead us off, please?
Alphabetical order is always such a wonderful thing. I married Jean Walker, and she was at the end, and so we've bracketed most of the people. Okay.
I totally get that. I moved from Steel Smith up to Bagnall in one swift move. That was wonderful.
It helped when I was working on my minor is in political science, and we'd have, you know, questions to be asked, and I could always figure out within a couple of what the question I was going to be asked. And then the second round was depending upon how many people didn't do anything. So that was always, the span was larger of what I had to prepare for. But anyway, so much for that. Okay, I attended budget committing meeting number three on April 12th. The WIF meeting on April 26th. The work session on May 4th, and the Alloa Business Association meeting on the 17th. No, not last Thursday, was that the 12th? So, 14th. So anyway, that's, those are my meetings.
Thank you, Commissioner Doan. Moving to Commissioner Duggan, your meetings attended.
Okay, for April and May, on the 22nd of April, I also attended the Budget Workshop number three. On May 4th, we had a work session where we got updates, financial updates, and WWSS update. On May 6th, I attended the WWAS executive session and board meeting. On May 11th, I attended the Washington County CPO number one meeting where State Senator Elizabeth Steiner Hayward gave a presentation, a brief discussion on what she thinks might happen in the final weeks of the legislative session this year. I think it's going to, it has another five weeks to go. weeks to go. And then tonight's meeting. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Moving smoothly to Commissioner Sanders, your meeting.
Thank you. I also attended the April 22 Budget Committee Meeting, our third meeting. The, this sounds very repetitive, the May 4th Monthly Work Session. Tonight's meeting on the 19th, and then I also attended today's May Talk in Water Presentation, and I thought that was a really fantastic presentation. And what I liked the most about it was the number of questions in the chat from the constituents, the community members in the TVWD. They had some excellent questions for Mr. Carper. He did a great job answering them as well, but you could see how eager everybody was to get some questions answered about their systems and how to be effective, efficient, and keep their bills down.
Love to hear that. That is wonderful that we're getting good audience participation. So Commissioner Schmidt, your meetings attended.
Yes, I just have two this month, the Work Session and tonight's meeting.
I think you have three. We had a meeting on the 11th.
Oh, that's right.
I met with you.
Yeah. Okay, make that three then.
Thank you. So let's add that because I met with our CEO and the Board Vice President to do agenda planning on the 11th of May.
Yes.
And I also had the Budget Committee Third Workshop on the 22nd. And then I missed the Work Session because I was on vacation, but then I have tonight's Board Meeting. So, and lastly, I would just like to take this moment to congratulate my fellow Commissioners, Schmidt and Duggan, on just sweeping the elections and getting reelected. So I'm very happy that that has happened and that we will continue to serve together.
You too, Bernice.
Yes, back at you, Bernice, and congratulations on you getting the most votes, but I attribute that to, again, the alphabetical listing of names, but.
I think it's two things. I think it's the alphabet, but I also think it's like, hello, the only woman on the board. So I take nothing away from you guys. I think we all did really well. And I am pleased that we are going to go forward together and serve in a better.
Yeah.
Same here. But I will claim bragging rights that I got the most votes in Multnomah County by two. Two more people in Multnomah County thought that I was worth voting for than my esteemed Commissioner, fellow Commissioners, so.
The other thing I'm always interested in is that there's like 150 to 190 people who did write-in votes. And I am dying to know who they wrote in because, just because, for no other reason, that when my husband does a write-in, it is inevitably Mickey Mouse. So is that what other people did? Or is there somebody else?
I would love to know, yes. What are real people and what are imaginary people that are characters that were written in?
Well, Mickey Mouse is real to me, but you know. Okay, so do we have any other topics to be raised by Commissioners? Hearing none, we will go to public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the Board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the regular agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons who would wish to comment tonight? And some wise person has told me you need to count to like, was it eight? And then if you don't hear anything, move on. Oh, Clark got reelected and visited PDF and R Board, too. I see a comment on that. So congratulations to Clark. Right, I didn't hear anything for.
Thank you very much.
And good on you. So moving to the consent agenda, consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any Board Member may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items that are requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the Board has approved those which do not require discussion. We just have two items on tonight's consent agenda. The first is to approve the April 21, 2021 Regular Board Meeting Minutes. And the second is to approve the May 4, 2021 Work Sessions Minutes. So do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Jim Don. So moved.
This is Dick, Second.
Right, we have a motion from Commissioner Don and a second from Commissioner Schmidt. I will ask the District Recorder to please provide a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion passes. Moving to the business agenda, first item we have is to consider adopting Resolution 04-21, which is a resolution approving the District's Financial Plan for the 2021-2023 biennium. And we'll have a staff report from our CFO, Paul Matthews.
Good evening again, President Bagnall, Commissioners. So I did highlight just a bit ago the importance of our financial plan, and I want to just cover that with you. Tonight, we'll talk about the financial management process. I'll go through that very quickly. It hasn't changed since we talked about it last time. The purpose and intended audience for financial plan, overview of the plan itself. We'll talk about the key assumptions, results, and then some next steps. Also appended to this presentation, I have what's been our traditional monthly discussion on the District's financial performance. So when I get to the end of our discussion about the financial plan, I'll ask if you'd like me to go through that part of the PowerPoint presentation or if just providing it to you in your packet was sufficient in that regard. But I need to mention one thing before we go too much further, and this is a really busy time of the year for the Finance Department, as we pull together the budget and we pull together the financial plan. And the financial plan, really, we, you know, it's a team effort to pull this stuff together, but the financial plan itself is really the work of Joe Healy. And so I just can't thank Joe enough, and I think the District has really benefited from his talents of bringing this together in a remarkable way. So congratulations and thank you to Joe Healy. So as we talk about the financial management process, we actually, the financial plan is a basis for that. We start by developing those financial strategies that we brought to the Board back. We started actually in the December and then January and actually had you approve those in March. That financial strategy then laid the groundwork for us to build the District's Financial Plan and pull those details together. And all that is done to provide some context for the budget, but it goes well beyond the budget. The financial plan is a 30-year look at this. The budget is, of course, that two-year spending plan, and that informs the rate process and then delivery. Of course, we've got our oversight around this whole process and its narrative process, where the financial plan and the budget and the rates and delivery all work together. In terms of some of that accountability we talked about earlier would be the annual audit, for example, and as well as the budget process itself, providing that accountability to the District as it manages the resources that our customers provide us to operate the water system. So here, of course, our focus is on the financial plan, and it's based on a lot of information. Frankly, we couldn't do this without the help of Carrie Pack and her team, especially Nick Augustus, to help us pull together those projects and the cost estimates of those, and Dave's team, who gives us the Baseline 6.1 and calculates the cost information and projects those well into the future. That's an important part of that plan, start with the Smash Fund, the capital improvements, and the forecast of customers, all the operational plans pulled together and provide that basis where we forecast the debt and we look at reserve balances and cash flow and come up with the financial plan that we presented to you today. So the purpose of the financial plan is, again, to ensure that we maintain a strategic focus on the District's finances. We're not just bumping around from year to year, but we have a purpose in mind. We're trying to fund the Willamette Water Supply System. We're trying to maintain cost-effective access to capital for the District so that we can borrow money at low rates and save our ratepayers, our customers, quite a bit of money. And by having a strategic focus, we keep our eye on the ball and we work towards that end, which is to lower our cost of building the infrastructure that we need. It provides the accountability over time. It provides information to our stakeholders. They need information, and this is that document that provides it. And most importantly, is it demonstrates in a clear way the commitment that the District has, the leadership of the District, both the elected Board Members and that you all represent, as well as the executive leadership, that we take financial management very seriously and that we're committed to that sound financial management. We have our internal stakeholders that we use, that we communicate with, the finance community, which for that, we're talking about investment bankers and others, who want to understand what the District's debt plans are, rating agencies, and we provide this to the WIFIA team as well. So that's our audience. Why are we seeking approval? First, the financial management policies suggest that the District should have a financial plan approved by the Board at least every two years. We do an approval rather than adoption, since the financial plan provides guidance to management rather than sets a firm policy. And that the rate process is a separate board-directed process. So we don't want to confuse the approval of a financial plan with anything like establishing or setting rates. This becomes a document that guides us, that we reflect on, but we will be having a separate process to look at rates as we approach this summer. So the plan itself has several sections and components. The introduction, and it is attached to the resolution, so it should be included in your packet that you received. The financial management objectives and policies, our water sales projections, our capital improvement plan, our capital financing plan, the financial forecast itself, and funds and reserves. We also attach a lot of appendices to this report. And the reason that we do that, again, is we want to have that document that we can send directly to, for example, Fitch or S&amp;P and say, here is the District's financial plan. So in that, we have our proposed financial planning assumptions that will be integrated into our financial management policies. The financial management policies anticipate that when a financial plan is adopted, that we then attach those assumptions and they become part of the financial management policies themselves. The capital improvement plan summary. The actual capital improvement plan and all the project descriptions are available separately. We've just included the summary. In past years, we actually attached all those capital project descriptions, and the document was becoming rather fat, and so we trimmed it down. Those documents are available, however, and will be part of the budget. So they'll be included in the budget itself, but we just attached the summary here. Our bond ordinance, this is new this year because we do have an adopted bond ordinance that authorized the issuance of our debt. We included that in there. Our master revenue bond declaration and the supplemental declaration that we used for the WIFIA loan and the re-execution of the WIFIA loan. Our parity certificate that shows how much debt the District can issue under its current financial situation. We include our per valuation report. That may seem like a strange thing to include in there, but that's an important metric that the rating agency use. So we include that in there for their use. And then we have the forecast model summary results and a map of the District. So that's an overview of the documents itself. Presented here is the expenditure plan for the District, and this is over what we call the 10-year presentation period. The financial plan actually goes out 30 years. The forecast that supports the financial plan goes out 30 years, but we're looking at the next 10 years in detail. So this is our 10-year presentation of the expenditure plan, but be assured that we do have 30 years of projections in there. The challenge is, frankly, after 10 years, the projections become a little bit less clear. But nevertheless, we want to make sure that we're tracking those things. For us, the horizon is becoming very acute, that we are looking at the water supply program and transitioning off of the Willamette System in 2027. So if you look on this particular line item, you see purchase water cost, you see our estimate of purchase water cost drops in 2027 to 9.9 million. And that's as we leave the Portland System and start using the GWC and the WWSS for our water supply. This is a graphical representation of our expenditure plan, and you can see that the big expenditures is that light blue area, which is the capital outlays, and that is the construction of the Willamette Water Supply System and the Willamette Intake Facilities. Essentially, it really is almost entirely the Willamette Water Supply System. That is the big item that we're spending money on. And that includes the Metzger Pipeline East, which is the TVWD Pipeline that will deliver water into the Metzger and around to the Center Street Facility that's being constructed and managed by the Willamette Water Supply Program on behalf of the District as part of our CIP. So you can see the big dollar amounts, and that is we build out our capital program. Here it is presented showing our funding, where we're going to get the sources of funding, essentially the borrowings. And the shaded area that you see there are the WIFIA draws that we're anticipating taking. So the way the WIFIA program works is we have our WIFIA loan, and we can then draw money against that WIFIA loan. Once we take the money, then we start to have capitalized interest accrue at that 1.35% rate. So we don't want to take that money unless we can do something better with that money. And right now, there isn't any investment that can generate that 1.35%. So we're using our cash balance, but we do anticipate in this year that we will be drawing, in the coming binding, we will be drawing on our WIFIA loan, and that's why it's important that we have the parity certificate in place that will allow us to access that money and the rate increases to support that. We are showing that we will be using some revenue bonds. We're showing that in 2025. But again, we are going to monitor this carefully, and if interest rates change or there's a reason for us to take action sooner, we may in fact accelerate that and let the WIFIA draws sit. However, right now, it is still in the District's best interest to delay those revenue bonds as long as we can. One other thing I would like to mention here is that we are working closely with Chief Engineer Pack and her team to look at funding some of the in-district CIP that might be WIFIA eligible. So we're looking at that as an opportunity as well as other ways of finding financing and funding for our in-district CIP. So we'll be monitoring this situation very carefully and we'll be moving forward as appropriate. The key debt assumptions that we have in there is the debt funding of $454 million for capital expenditures through that presentation period, 2031. We assume our issuance cost of about 3/4% of the power amount of the bonds. That's an important metric for us, probably not as important to our Board, other than the fact it does add to our costs. We manage those issuance costs and work with our investment bankers and our municipal advisor to make sure that we have accurate and reasonable estimates there. The WIFIA loan costs about $500,000. That paid for the initial loan as well as the re-execution. We feel that if we do another WIFIA loan, that the cost will be much less because we already have the documentation in place and it would essentially be just a re, like a re-execution, but it would be just a replay of that same WIFIA loan. For our revenue bonds, we assume a borrowing period of 30 years. For WIFIA, we do the maximum out, 35 years after substantial completion. So that is starting from the July 1, 2026, 35 years after that. For our debt service reserve, this is the amount of money that we keep in the bank in the event that we run into problems. We use something called MADS, or the Max Annual Debt Service, per issue. We don't keep one for the WIFIA loan. It's not required, and it's not economic for us to keep that, so we aren't. But we are forecasting that for the revenue bonds, we would do that. In fact, what will happen is with each revenue bond, we'll make a decision. We'll look at the market. We'll determine whether or not we should get a credit enhancement, if we should fund a reserve, or if we should simply go to market without a reserve. And frankly, it may be. And and frankly, it may be, all three of those may be the viable solution. We just need to see what the market conditions are and make a game day decision on those things. For our debt service coverage ratio, we're keeping our our debt service coverage at minimum, including SDCs at 2.0 and excluding SDCs at 1.5 because of the way that our debt is structured and because of the way that our capital plan is and the cash flow we need to maintain. The debt service coverage actually isn't the binding constraint. So I'll talk a little bit about that. That isn't the one that constrains us. Our debt service coverage is going to be much higher than what our minimum minimum targets are. But that is the policy. So if things change, we'll want to maintain that that policy and that's the the key assumption we have here. Our additional bonds test, this is a technical thing, but in order for us to issue more debt, we need to meet certain metrics. Those are listed here and I don't need to spend too much time talking about that. Now, I do want to talk about the net leverage ratio. This is a new ratio that we are publishing. We've in the past, just we worked with our municipal advisor to determine how much debt the the district could reasonably issue. There is a maximum amount that the district can issue. We can only leverage ourselves so far. But we've actually worked to develop a metric called a net leverage ratio, and it's one that the rating agencies typically use. And what we're suggesting here and what we put in the plan is that in no year would we let our net leverage exceed eight times and that we wouldn't allow it to be seven times for more than for three consecutive years. So let me tell you what the net leverage is. A big number is bad, a small number is good. What it is essentially is it's a ratio of how much debt that you have with how much money you have to pay that debt in any one year. So think of it as as I've got so many millions of dollars to make my debt service payment and what's the total debt? I divide the two and I come up with it. It'd be nice if we were that easy, but there are other things that go into that calculation. So for example, when we look at our net leverage.
Paul, one of the things that I was just thinking about with that is, does that in any way have some element in it that that takes into consideration the net income of our constituency?
No, the not in the net leverage calculation, however, in the assessment that the rating agencies do look at is the demographics of of the district and we are in really good shape. They look at the median household income, other measures of affordability. And so right now, the district is fine in that regard. This literally is just looking at the financials of the district, how much total debt we have and what are funds available for debt services, it's called, are are available and divides the two. So we do look at 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 the demographic information and they do that generally at the county level, actually, because we're primarily Washington County. But in that net leverage calculation, that total debt that we put in the numerator, the big number, it includes adjustments for things like our purse liability. So you might remember we funded our per side account. We did that to bring that down. Now, they have a different way of calculating, the rating agencies depending on them has a different way of calculating our purse liability. So for example, Fitch, who we're meeting with tomorrow, I mentioned that earlier tonight, they assume the discount rate of 6%. The state of Oregon assumes the discount rate of 7.2%. These are technical things, but the bottom line is the math comes out differently and affects our our net leverage. So we want to make sure that when we communicate to our rating agencies and to others that they've got a clear understanding of the district's financial performance. And that's why we've integrated the net leverage calculation directly into the financial plan itself. A lot of details here that I assume that probably 80% of the board isn't too interested in. And I apologize for that, but I thought it was important for us to present that. The last item that we have on the list is is liquidity, which is how much cash we want to have on hand. And our assumption is that we're going to have at least 250 days of O N M cost on hand. That's sufficient working capital as well as some money to if our revenue were interrupted by some sort of major disaster. So these are the key debt assumptions that we have in our financial plan. I'm going to slow down for quick breaths and see if there are any questions. Hearing no questions. The other things important are the interest rates that we use to to assume in our forecast. And a couple of things. First of all, future revenue bonds are, we are going to be issuing debt. And so looking at what the future revenue bonds are is an important indicator. Right now, based on the estimates, working with our professional advisors, we're assuming about three and a half percent is the current rate and that's unlikely to change over the next several years. Having said that, if there is a, if the market perceives and becomes convinced that inflation is in the offing, we may see this tick up. So there are, it's difficult to tell. The other thing is, believe it or not, increases in because we have tax free debt, tax exempt debt, increases in tax rates can actually drive our interest rate down. So we're going to have to watch as that goes forward. The WIFIA loan is the loan that we've locked in now. Our earnings on interest, now this is interest earnings are really low. And you might say, well, this is crazy. Why are you assuming 1.4% is declining over time? That's because we have a portfolio right now of of investments that the district purchased prior to the reduction of interest rates. So we manage that portfolio very carefully and we're running that down as as bonds that we've purchased mature. Our reinvestment opportunities are much lower than they were. And so you're seeing the the interest earnings rate that we're assuming within our financial forecast go down. And that's just, that's just good forecasting. It's not what we want to see, but it is in fact based on our portfolio, what we're likely to experience. Our purchase water cost, I talked about that a little earlier. Right now, we take the bulk of our water from Portland and the bulk of our revenue goes to Portland. When you look at this chart, you you might think that, well, Portland, boy, that's kind of an expensive source. In fact, it is. But in the JWC, also you need to take into account that we provided the capital that funded the investment there. So when you take that into account, the the Portland water isn't as dramatically different as as one might assume. So if we look over time, how we're assuming our our water demands will come to the district. And this is part of that demand forecast and it's important for us to get this as close to accurate as possible. We do think that our demands will grow slowly, not not dramatically. And we've incorporated that into our forecast. And through 2026, we're assuming that we will be getting water from Portland, including winter interruptible water, which we get at an advantageous rate. And that's starting in 2027, we'll be taking more water from the JWC because we're assuming that that is going to be the operating cost because of pumping and location. It'll be cheaper to get water out of the JWC than the Willamette. So we've got a mix of water that will change over time, but that's our assumption in the financial forecast right now. The impact on our customers is an important metric that we want to measure. And again, I want to be very careful that people don't walk away looking at the slide saying this is what we're going to be doing for rates over this next several years. This is what the plan says and our our financial strategy was to have two rate increases in this biennium. So to have the rate increases in this biennium, it'd be about nine and a half percent. And if that happens and everything else is held constant and everything happens the way that we guessed it would, then we'd be looking at rate increases of about 4%. Now, that isn't, that isn't likely to happen because there's just too much uncertainty in the world. There's not enough serendipity that we will hit those numbers directly. But this is the estimate that we have and the impact that the financial plan anticipates right now on our customers. So the blue bars are the typical bills for seven CCF of water for single family residential customer with five eighths by three quarter inch meter, and these are on a monthly basis. And they're on the left hand axis. The rate increases or changes are the red line and they're on the right hand axis of the rate adjustments. We do use reserves and debt to levelize the rates over time. And I know that we've in the past had customers ask questions or actually be very critical of the district for anticipating the use of debt. Technically, right now, the district is debt free. We have a WIFIA loan, but we haven't accessed that. But it's very important that we use leverage to lower overall cost to our to our customers. So our cost of capital needs to be managed. And the way to do that is to use some equity and some debt to lower our overall cost of capital, just like a business would. And that saves our customers money. And that's what we're planning to do. And that's the point of of this graph here is to show that debt can help us get through these periods of high capital outlay. We're not spending it on operating expenses. It is spent on capital investment that will return benefits to the district and its customers over literally decades. But we also look at our cash reserves and this is a the important thing from here. As I mentioned, this is a long term capital plan. We don't want to see where the district is in dire financial straits for the next 30 years because we do have some capital permits that are needed to be funded and we don't know what all those are. We just simply are not entitled to know the future with that much clarity. So we need to make sure that we have financial capacity in the future to fund those future capital improvements. So what you see here is a projection of what our reserves are. If you look at the the blue line, that would be our cash investments. The gray area is actually a small amount that would be the debt service reserve. That would be off limits from us. It'd be reserved to pay debt service if we were to hit a financial problem. The red line that you see there is the minimum reserve. So it's given to us by our policy. And that's that 250 day policy that we talked about. So that says that's the minimum amount of cash we can have on hand. Money above that then is available for capital improvements to make sure that the district has a robust capital improvement plan. And and again, this this shows and demonstrates an impact on the customers and that the smoothing that we can do. All right. So what do we want to do in the future? What are our next steps? Couple of things. We want to improve or increase the operations plan, part of of the of the financial plan and formalize that. We want to work with our engineering partners, maybe even to issue a formal capital improvements plan. It's part of the budget, but we may want to do something a little bit different. And then we want to integrate history into the financial plan so we can track the the plan over time. So our next steps will be to update Appendix A of the Financial Management Policies to reflect the assumptions of the financial plan should the board choose to approve this financial plan. We'll actually then conduct the rate setting process again this summer. And one of the other things that at some point we need to do with the board before we issue publicly, before we issue debt, revenue bonds, other than the WIFIA loan, is we we probably want to schedule some financial disclosure training. There are certain things that that as board members, we want you to know about how to discuss the district's financial just to protect the district's interest. And then, of course, we'll issue our first revenue bonds. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions that you might have about our financial plan. Again, I want to thank Joe Healy for all of his work in pulling this this plan together. Does the board have any questions?
I want to thank both you and Joe. Great job as always. Questions from board members?
So if there are no questions, staff recommends the board adopt Resolution 0421, approving the district's 2021-23 financial plan.
All right. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 04-21, which is a resolution approving the district's financial plan for the 2021-2023 biennium?
This is Commissioner Duggan, so moved.
This is Jim Don, seconded.
Commissioner Duggan has moved and Commissioner Don has seconded. So I'd like to ask our district recorder to provide a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
That sounds unanimous to me, so the motion passes. Our second agenda item, yes?
Yes, President Bagnell, before we proceed, I I just want to confirm that I have probably another 40 slides that are the ones I presented each month on the financial performance I was going to do as part of this agenda item. And with your permission, I would just leave that in the packet and and let you absorb it that way without actually going through each one of these slides in the PowerPoint. But it's.
So my personal opinion is that we can all read the packet and get the update. But if somebody really wants to see 40 more slides, please let me know. Again, it's the sound of silence and Paul, please don't take that personally. It's not that your slides are boring, but you do a good job of of using the same kind of metrics from month to month so we can track where it's going.
That's intense. So thank you.
So I will move to the second business item for this evening, which is to consider adopting Resolution 05-21, a resolution transferring general fund operating contingency appropriation to the Willamette Intake Facilities Fund, materials and services appropriation and capital outlay appropriation for the biennial budget period 2019-2021. And the staff report again from our CFO, Paul Matthews.
Thank you, President Bagnell. So we did talk briefly about this at the work session, which was the situation within Fund 44, which is a joint venture fund for the intake facilities. It's our Fund 44. TVWD is the managing agency and that's why we bring this issue to the board tonight. So I want to give you a brief overview of the intake facilities, talk about a roles managing agency, talk about the budgetary requirements, and then talk about the options that we have and then a recommended action for the board to take tonight. So first of all, the fund that we're talking about here is a joint venture fund. It's the Willamette Intake Facilities Fund, which is used to account for all the activities of the Willamette Intake Facilities, which is that joint venture of TVWD, the cities of Beaverton, Hillsboro, Sherwood, Tigard and Wilsonville. So the six of us are the Willamette Intake Facilities formed by an intergovernmental agreement that was approved by the board back in 2018. The WIF Fund 44 accounts for all the transactions of the WIF. The WIF Board adopts the annual work plan and budget each year. And the district adopts a budget for the WIF on a two year basis. So we have a bit of a timing problem that when we do our biennial budget, we have the first year of the annual work plan and budget, but not the second one. The fiscal year 2021 annual work plan and budget that the WIF Board adopted exceeds what TVWD budgeted for the WIF. So we have a difference in the budget budgeted amounts. So as the managing agency, TVWD does really two things. First, it does the governance and operations and that's something that Director Craska does, provides essentially management of the Willamette intake facilities and we do the capital project delivery. On the management, on the financial side, though, we also manage the financial affairs, which means that we do the accounting and the budgetary control. So what I'm talking about tonight is the budgetary controls, which is TVWD's responsibility. So if we look at the the WIF budget requirements, the first slide, part of the slide that you see here are the appropriations in the annual work plan that TVWD and the WIF have taken together. So if we look at the first column in 2020, you will see the actual expenditure amounts, the appropriations, the annual work plan and the actual expenditure amounts. For 2021, we are looking at planned spending amounts. So let me just take you through the numbers here. There's a lot of numbers on this table. I just want to walk you through them to make sure everybody's on board. So TVWD's appropriations within Fund 44 are the first few rows of the table. We appropriated $176,815 for materials and services in 2020, $731,827 of capital outlay in 2020. We did something similar in 2021 for a total amount because we're on a biennial budget basis. The total amount is what's relevant here, $346,615 of material and services. $346,615 of material and services, $7,557,825 of capital outlay. So that's what is appropriated within Fund 44 and that's the legal spending that, that we have within, within that fund. If we go down two rows, you'll see the annual work plan and budget. You'll see what was adopted by the WIF in fiscal year 2020 and you'll see what was adopted in fiscal year 2021 and then you'll see the total amount adopted. So that's your annual work plan and budget. But we're concerned about the biennium and not all the money in the first year was spent. So you go down to the third numbers that you see there, it's the actual planned spending. So in fiscal 2020, which is over and we booked that and we know what happened, we spent $83,440 in material services and capital outlay of $551,976. That's in the book that happened. Now we're looking at 2021. We're saying, what are we planning to spend? And in working with Lisa Hotten from the program and with Dave Staff, looking at the actual expenditures, we want to be prepared that they could spend their entire annual work plan and budget. So we want to make sure as the managing agency that TVWD has sufficient appropriation to spend that total amount. So the actual spending in fiscal 2020 plus the planned spending in fiscal 21 gives us our total amount, $420,590 for material and services, $8,113,208 in capital outlay. So that's how much that we want to have on hand. Now, the next thing we want to look at here is a reconciliation of these things. So the actual and planned spending plan that I just talked about, $420,590, is more than the current appropriations of $346,615. So we have a difference of about $74,000 for material services and about $555,000 for capital outlay. And that is if the WIF spends the entire amount that's in their annual work plan and budget in this fiscal year. So before I go to the next slide, I'm sorry, we just want to make sure any questions about this. What we're essentially doing is we're wanting to plug that $74,000 hole in MNS and the $555,000 hole in capital outlay. And we want to do that before the end of this fiscal year so we can stay in compliance as a managing agency for the WIF. So the work session, we talked about the, the two options that were available. One would be to do a supplemental budget and that would recognize payments from the partners in the WIF as a revenue source. By the way, that would include TVWD's payments. And as an increase in resources and then we could increase the appropriations within Fund 44. But a simpler, less costly way of doing this is a transfer of appropriations. We would then use appropriations authority within the district's general operating contingency. We would transfer that appropriation to Fund 44. Now this won't change anything having to who pays for what or the timing of us getting paid by our partners. All this does is allow us to fulfill their, the requirements of the managing agency to have appropriations available in Fund 44 in a less costly manner and doing a supplemental budget. So supplemental budget would require that we do some additional advertising and things of that nature that don't bring a lot of value to, to the district customers or partners. And that's why we're, we recommended the transfer appropriation route. So with that, I just want to highlight what the proposed transfers would be. What the resolution under consideration tonight would do is it would reduce appropriation within the general funds, general operating contingency by $629,358. It would increase appropriations for the inter-fund transfer by the same amount. So there would be no net change in appropriations within the general fund. It would simply be a transfer of appropriations. That inter-fund transfer would then be transferred to the Willamette Intake Facilities Fund 44. It would come in as a resource for inter-fund transfers of the $629,000. We would then increase the requirements. This resolution would increase the requirements for MNS by $73,975, capital outlay by the $555,380, which matches the information I presented two slides previously. So that is our proposal and the resolution that we attached will accomplish that. So management's recommendation is the board approve Resolution 0521, transferring general fund, general operating contingency appropriation to the Willamette Intake Facilities Fund, material and services appropriation, capital outlay appropriation for the biennial budget period of 2019-21. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
I would just like to take a moment to thank Commissioner Duggan for recommending that you reach out separately to me and let me know this is coming since I missed the work session because that would have been my big question, which would have taken up a whole lot of time, pointlessly, for why aren't we doing a supplemental budget? Because that's what I would have been expecting. So thank you, Commissioner Duggan, for sparing us all. Do other commissioners have questions?
My spidey sense thought that you might be interested in that.
And President Bagnall- President Bagnall was very kind to take my email while she was vacationing in Wyoming, so I do appreciate that.
Other questions from commissioners? So either you guys are real easy tonight or I've kind of lost my speed here because I'm not hearing anything.
This is Jim Don. I have no questions.
Thank you.
This is Dick. I have none.
This is Jim Duggan and then no additional questions. Thank you, Paul.
Yes, Todd Sanders, thank you, Paul. Thank you, everybody. And I have no additional questions either.
Well, thank you, everybody. In that case, since there are no questions, do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 05-21, which is a resolution transferring general fund, general operating contingency appropriation to the Willamette Intake Facilities Fund, materials and services appropriation and capital outlay appropriation for the biennial budget period 2019-21?
This is Todd Sanders and I move to adopt Resolution 05-21.
This is Jim Don. I'll second it.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders has moved. Commissioner Don has seconded. So I will ask the district recorder for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yes.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous, so the motion passes. And I'm, I'm just reading down the agenda and my little script here and I see that we have no further items on tonight's business. So I am going to adjourn this meeting if anybody-